Okay. All right, we'll call this meeting the Jefferson County Council to order. Rule call please.
Alderman Young, Teeter, Fire, here. Niles, here. Miller, here.
Here.
Brandle, here.
Lars, here.
Tully.
Here. Thank you, Alderman Young, as excuse this evening. This time we'll entertain public participation. Anyone wishing to address the council may do so. We ask that you please come to the podium, state your name, address, and reason for appearing.
Mike Celestino, 140 South Dewey Avenue. I'm wondering if you get new police duty?
No.
No? Okay.
You got anything legitimate?
I do. I just got your last. No, I am. I'm thoroughly pissed off right now. I'm trying to run a business, COVID's going on, I have no employees, and it seems like his biggest concern is what my yard looks like. Okay? My father just died, he sends police officers to my house on the day of his funeral, they'll tell me I need to straighten it up. I spent 20 or 30 hours cleaning it, but according to him, it's still not good enough. I put a new roof on, I painted it last year. I'm thoroughly pissed off. We got this little ordinance that really means nothing because he can't understand any of it. It's very discombobulated. It really says a whole lot of mumble jumble in there that no one can interpret and no one can tell me what it means. Maybe we can get that thing straightened out, or maybe we can have a little absence of it for COVID? Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Hearing done, we'll move on to number three ordinance, number four dash 21. Amending ordinance number four dash 21, a liquor license to premises where the sale of gasoline is conducted or carried on. Alderman Mars, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Fellow council members, citizens of Jefferson, city of Jefferson, ordinance number four dash 21. Whereas the city of Jefferson now prohibits the issuance of Class A intoxicating liquid licenses to the premises where the sale of gasoline is conducted or carry on. And whereas the city of Jefferson finds that such prohibition is no longer proper due to its changes as how such businesses are now conducted, now therefore, the common council does hereby ordain as follows. Section 1, section 160-5, parent L is hereby deleted in its entirety. Section 2, the ordinance shall be effective on the date after the enactment and publication of this ordinance, as required by law. I so move.
It's been moved, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Fire. Discussion?
We discussed this at regulatory. This was an ordinance that we had on the books for a number of years. We feel that it's kind of outdated and needed to be deleted from our books and because gas stations are just being run differently now, they're almost like a mini grocery store. So we just want it to be more updated. That's wanted to be proactive and change your.
Just a question. Peggy, I would imagine your committee is aware, right, that the city does restrict the number of those licenses issued by ordinance, so I'm assuming that's like a next step that we're going to have to increase?
Yes, and right now, my understanding, there is only one available. So the next thing we would have to decide, what? You know, how many?
I believe there's five that are authorized and is forehauled, and there's an application for that last one, right?
And I don't know, Attorney Rogers, is there a limit on how many we could? Or is that, that's not, that would be something we can set, correct?
Council discretion, please.
Yeah, right now, I think the ordinance says just five.
Okay. I think that's something that we would have to, I think that we would have to discuss that. We can bring that back to the council if we'd want to change it from the five.
I said it on some of the discussions, and they were very good discussions. I think everybody was of one opinion that we didn't want this to be an issue where it would give one business an advantage over another, so if we're going to offer this to people at gas stations or at our convenience stores, we would, we would set the number that it would be appropriate that all would be able to get one, if they so chose.
So then, I kind of assume, Mayor, I know the, the one application that's pending is from a gas station, so probably you would like this on your next committee agenda?
Yeah.
Okay.
And then a future discussion about what the right number, maximum number should be?
Yeah.
There with you, yeah. Put that on the next.
And we all really think it's a good idea to have six more liquor stocks, is that?
That's what we want to discuss as far as what, you know, what, what is the limit? We don't want to have it indefinite or infinity, but, you know. But there's, I mean, we, I guess there has to be some, some type of a limit. It's worth a discussion. So I'd like to bring that, the number back to regulatory. Okay.
Good, thank you. Is there any other questions or comments? Hearing done, all in favor of approval of ordinance number four dash 21? Please signify by saying ayes, your call is your name, or if you're opposed.
Alderman Teeter.
Aye.
Fire.
Aye.
Niles.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Brandle.
Aye.
Lars.
Aye.
Tully.
Aye.
Carry six to one. Resolution number seven, tonight's consent agenda. Alderman Fire, please.
Honorable Mayor, council members and citizens, city of Jefferson, resolution number seven. Be it resolved by the common council of city of Jefferson, Wisconsin, that the consent agenda for May 18th, 2021 is hereby adopted. Voucher payable for May 2021 in the amounts of $412, 146.53. And April, manual checks in the amounts of $2,080.38. Payroll summary for May 7th, 2021 in the amounts of $166,316.25. Council minutes from May 4th, 2021, out of the common council. Committee of the whole, 2021, subsidy of $3,000. Licenses approved for regulatory committee, we have one operator's license for Ainsley Howard for Jefferson Gulf. I would so move.
It's been moved, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Mars. Any discussion? Hearing done, all in favor of approval of tonight's consent agenda? Please signify by saying ayes, your name is called. Know if you're opposed or abstained if you are not in the last council meeting.
Alderman Fire.
Aye.
Niles.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Brandle.
Aye.
Lars.
Aye.
Tully.
Aye.
Teeter.
Thank you. Resolution number eight, a resolution authorizing the award of a contract for Fire and EMS station solar energy improvement projects. Alderman Miller, please.
Thank you, Mayor, fellow council members and citizens. Whereas the city of Jefferson received three bids from contractors interested in the design and installation of the solar panel array for the Jefferson Fire and EMS station. And whereas the value of the lowest bidder is included in the following table. Lowest bidder was PDC Electrical Contractors, $47,284. Whereas the project consists of designing and building a 20,000, a 20,000 kilowatt rooftop solar panel array on the Jefferson Fire and EMS station. And whereas the city's engineering consultant, Forester Electric Engineering, has reviewed the bids and is recommending a base bid award in the amount of $47,284 to PDC Electrical Contractors of Monroe, Wisconsin. And whereas the finance committee has reviewed the bids and concurs with recommendation of Forester Electrical Engineering, and has determined that the project has bid within the budget of $70,000 authorized for the project. And now therefore be it resolved by the common council of the city of Jefferson, Wisconsin, that it herein approves the base bid of PDC Electrical Contractors of Monroe, Wisconsin, for the design and construction of a 20 KW rooftop solar panel array on the Jefferson Fire and EMS station in amounts of $47,284. And further direction authorizes the city administrator to execute any contract or document associated with the above action on behalf of the city of Jefferson upon review and consent of the city attorney. I so move.
It's been moved and seconded. And discussion tonight, we welcome from Forester Engineering, Eric Anthony and David Campbell. Welcome, guys.
Thank you, thanks for having us. As Mr. Mayor said, I'm Eric Anthony of Forester Electrical Engineering, this is David Campbell, he's one of our electrical engineers. Just would like to say thanks for having us over tonight. We were engaged a few months ago to produce a spec for the Fire and EMS station for a 20 KW design-build PV system. We did receive three bids on the project. The information we distributed earlier, as the resolution said, PDC was the lowest responsible bidder, based on the bids that we were received. The project is slated to begin once everything is passed, but you can get contracts out. Gladly answer any questions, or have David answer any questions that we could for you, if there were any?
Have you guys worked with PDC before, or?
Our firm has worked with PDC before, yes. And they're getting more into solar PV installations. We've worked with them on other, other commercial projects.
And will you two be overseeing the project?
Our initial contract was to put the spec out, so that's something that Administrator Freitag, we would have to discuss, but I'm sure we would be involved in that. We definitely would appreciate being involved with it.
Wouldn't want me doing it, right? Or telling what we did.
Any, I guess, David, you can chime in here, answer any questions that are bringing up that you'd like to.
If, I believe that it's been brought up in the finance committee discussion, but PDC has offered us a change order in the amount of $3,500 to maximize the output of our equipment. And based on some figures that I had sent over to Tim, that would decrease the amount of time it takes to pay off that system by 1.86 years, and it would increase the total amount of money that the system generates by about $10,000. So we would highly recommend that you take up that option if you decide to award the contract, but based on our experience with PDC, we think that they can do it pretty well.
I think it's just a little clarification, if there is any questions. The spec that we wrote for this was a design-build contract, so we're relying on the contractor. We gave them basically an outline of the system that was desired. They made a, they gave us a bid, made a proposal, and that's what we're recommending tonight.
That $3,500 option sounds good, is that, does it sound good to you two?
Yeah, yeah, it sounds, it sounds like an excellent value. Over the lifetime of the system, it'll pay itself off, almost three times over.
And these panels are stationary, right?
They're roof on and stationary, correct?
Roof on and stationary, yeah, one with the sun. But we are positioned, we would be positioned, we talked a little bit in the previous meeting about the alternate and the possibility for storage at some point in the future, we would be positioned to make that move if we ever chose to, right?
Right. Actually, as part of that $3,500 adder, they'll provide equipment where basically a battery storage system or additional solar would just be flood and flood.
Okay.
Good.
It's, right, so what, what you're doing by accepting that adder is setting yourself up for the future even more than what we had anticipated in the original deal with us.
Good. Any other questions, anybody? Thank you, guys, appreciate your work for us.
Appreciate it.
See you, boys.
Yep, you bet. Thank you.
If there are no other questions or comments, we'll call a question, all in favor of resolution number eight. Please signify by saying ayes, your name is called. Know if you're opposed.
Alderman Niles.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Brandle.
Aye.
Lars.
Aye.
Tully.
Aye.
Teeter.
Aye.
Fire.
Aye.
It's unanimous, thank you. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Keep it moving. All right, resolution number nine, resolution approving a new curbside brush pickup policy by the Public Works Department. Alderman Brandle, please.
Honorable Mayor Offerman, fellow council members, and citizens of Jefferson, resolution number nine. Whereas the Public Works Department provides curbside collection of brush to city residents as a convenience for the maintenance of their property, and whereas monthly brush pickup is intended for typical residential yard cleanup and is not intended for lot clearing or means of disposing of entire trees, and whereas the city engineer-director of Public Works has drafted a curbside brush and leaf policy for city residents, now therefore be it resolved by the common council of the city of Jefferson, Wisconsin, adopts the curbside brush and leaf collection policy presented herein. I would so move.
It's been moved, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Niles. Discussion?
I can give a brief update on this. So this was discussed at the Streets Committee meeting. Essentially, right now, the city, you know, we, we perform monthly pickups, first, first Monday of the month continues through the week. Right now, we just have some guidelines, and those guidelines don't address several items, including the size limitation on individual branches, the size limitation on the overall piles, mixing of foreign materials, exact placement of the piles, and the months of the services available to residents. And typically, this service is something that we would get through the city in three to five days, and we've had instances where it's taken upwards of three weeks to be able to get through, because we have had residents over the past few years that have kind of treated us as a landscaping service, a lot clearing services. So we wanted to put some guidelines, this was a policy that was discussed internally, as well as with the Streets Committee, basically for the service to run April through November, which is consistent with our compost site. And essentially, if passed tonight, what we would be doing is ruling this out, putting on the city website, putting on Facebook, we'd be putting in the Dale Union, and we'd also be putting, inserting it into a monthly utility bill. And the other thing that we don't currently have is the ability to say no to somebody that has overextended the services, and so one of the things that we're going to be doing is putting, having the guys carry around basically hangers to explain why, why brush wasn't necessarily picked up. And our intention is not to get out of doing work or anything like that, it's just basically to, it's safer, the way, when there's guidelines laid out, it's more efficient, and one of the things is also, if there is someone that hires a contractor, to be able to give that contractor guidelines as far as, you can put this much out there for us to do, otherwise the compost site is still open, you know, three and a half days a week, to be able to drop that off. And on the back of these hangers is the policy as well. So the policy itself also addresses other things that some people aren't aware of, how fall leaf pickup is handled, the alternative to curbside collection as far as the availability of the compost site, as well as, a lot of residents know that we do deliver chip brush to residents as well. So I think it's a policy that's gonna, certainly, it's, it's not a strict policy, but it's definitely going to give better guidelines and people less questions as far as how brush is picked up. So something needed, and I think that the time is right to be able to put it in place.
Okay, thanks. Does anyone have any questions, or Bill?
I have a question. You're going to run us bill through April through November?
Correct.
So what, the compost site is closed in November, what do people do with their brush or branch that falls off in December through March?
So any time that there is, I would probably say that, on average, when we have run this throughout the winter, I'm going to say there's less than five times where we have actually picked up brush over the winter, mainly because of the fact that it's under snow piles anyway. The policy does address that in case there is any issues with winter storms or anything like that, that the city does go out for those, those items as well. And it does address the pickup Christmas trees as well. So under certain, it doesn't give such strict guidelines that if there's an issue, a resident can't call us and we'll take care of it or anything like that.
So it is possible if somebody has a limb fall off, they can call you, you'll pick it up?
Absolutely, and especially over the winter, it's dependent on availability due to snow pickup or anything like that as well.
Perfect.
Yeah.
Good. Any other questions?
No, you got a sacred question.
Hearing done, all in favor of resolution number nine, please signify by saying ayes, your name is called, know if you're opposed.
Alderman Miller.
Aye.
Brandle.
Aye.
Lars.
Aye.
Tully.
Aye.
Teeter.
Aye.
Fire.
Aye.
Niles.
Aye.
Thank you.
Resolution number 10, a resolution approving staff promotion of a lead crew person in the Public Works Department. Alderman Tully, please.
Thank you, Mayor, city of Jefferson, resolution number 10. Whereas the Public Works Department currently has a vacant position as lead crew person, and whereas Public Works Director Pinnell intends to promote an existing crew person to fill this open position, and whereas Public Works Director Pinnell is recommending that Jeff Mang, a current crew person of the Public Works Department, be promoted by the city of Jefferson to lead crew person of the Public Works Department. And whereas the Personnel Committee has reviewed the recommendation of Public Works Director Pinnell, and also recommends the promotion of Jeff Mang to the common council. Now therefore be it resolved by the common council of the city of Jefferson, Wisconsin, that it herein authorizes the city administrator to promote Jeff Mang to Public Works Lead Crew Person effective May 19th, 2021, at a wage rate of $27 an hour, placed in grade six of the city of Jefferson Compensation Plan. I would so move.
It's been moved, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Miller. And Bill?
Sure. Jeff is here tonight. Public Works Department, we talked about this in committee, the whole as well, when I kind of explained some things that are a little bit of changeover that we're having in the Public Works Department as well. Jeff is a long-term employee of the Public Works and by far the most experienced in construction, as well as equipment, equipment operator training. And the way that we currently have it set up, we have a Public Works, under me, we have a Public Works Foreman, and then we have six crew persons. So there is a vacant grade in there for the lead, lead crew person, which has been vacant for several years. That becomes an issue when the foreman is off, with the added duties that I've had, makes it very difficult for me to be able to run that department. So this basically gives us a more stability, more leadership in that department, basically two people running Public Works Department. Jeff will do an excellent job, and he will assume the duties of Public Works Foreman when he is out on leave, and I'll explain that a little bit more in the next resolution. But I think Jeff is well-suited for the position, well-respected by not only our department, but all departments, and I think he'll do a fantastic job in that leave position.
All right, any questions?
Mayor, this was also voted unanimously at a previous personnel meeting.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing done, all in favor of approval, please signify by saying ayes, your name is called.
Alderman Brandle.
Aye.
Lars.
Aye.
Tully.
Aye.
Teeter.
Aye.
Fire.
Aye.
Niles.
Aye.
Two unanimous. Congratulations, Jeff, and thank you very much, we appreciate your work. Thanks, we'll move on to resolution number 11, a resolution approving staff promotion of a Public Works Foreman. Alderman Teeter, please.
Honorable Mayor Offerman, council members and citizens of Jefferson, this is resolution number 11. Whereas Public Works Director Pinnell has received a letter from the Public Works Foreman, Dave Hubbard, that he intends to retire on or about December of 2021, leaving a vacancy at that position, and whereas Public Works Director Pinnell intends to fill this open position. Internally advertise the position to all city staff interviews with conducted with potential candidates, and whereas Public Works Director Pinnell is recommending that Andrew Boyd, a current employee of the Public Works Department, be promoted by the city of Jefferson to fill the vacant position upon the retirement of Foreman Hubbard. And whereas, the Personnel Committee has reviewed the recommendation of the Public Works Director Pinnell, and also recommends the promotion of Andrew Boyd to the common council. Now therefore be it resolved by the common council of the city of Jefferson, Wisconsin, that upon the retirement of Foreman Hubbard, it herein authorizes the city administrator to appoint Andrew Boyd to Public Works Foreman at a wage rate of $26.33 per hour, placed in grade seven of the city of Jefferson Compensation Plan. Furthermore, upon satisfactory reviews from the Public Works, Pinnell, Foreman, Boyd's wage will increase after a year, after year one, to be equal to that wage of the lead crew person, and after year two, to increase to 2.5% above the lead and crew person. I would so move.
It's been moved, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Brandle. Bill?
Sure. A lot of information in the resolution, but essentially, Dave Hubbard, our currently current foreman, has indicated he's going to be retiring later this year. A lot of that has to do with some back issues that Dave has been dealing with for years. Dave's done a great job for us, the Public Works, but it does create a, an opening. And this is a position that takes time to be able to fill, so that's why I discussed it at length with not only the committee, the whole, but Personnel. The first thing we wanted to do was to look at trying to find internal candidates for that, so what we did was advertise, not only with the Public Works Department, but all city departments. I will say that the two candidates that did interview for that position were Jeff and Andrew. After coming out of the interview, it was, and actually, it was a recommendation from, from Jeff and other staff members that Andrew looked at the position, which tells me the respect he has from other employees. So essentially, what we'd be looking at doing is with the resolution tonight, Andrew's position as a foreman won't actually go into effect until the effective date that Dave Hubbard retires. What we want to do is to be able to spend the rest of this year actually training not only him, but Jeff into that position, so that there's a smooth transition in December when Dave retires. Andrew, very well respected, not only by the staff, but other city departments as well. He's a volunteer fireman, and he's a current mechanic. What that's going to do when Andrew comes over is, is going to leave a vacancy at the mechanic's position. So I'm maybe working with Jeff Shear to fill that position, but we're going to hold off, I'm probably advertising for a couple months to kind of fit into that transition. But currently, we're down to one mechanic anyway, as Jeff Shear is out in surgery as well right now. So as far as the wages go, just so everybody understands, Andrew coming with less experience is starting off at $26.33, which is actually less than the lead crew person right now. Andrew, to his credit, said, "I haven't earned the position yet," so again, that kind of speaks to his maturity in the position. But essentially, what we'd be doing is looking at after year one, moving that up to equal the lead crew persons, and then a two and a half percent bump, which is consistent with the step plan after year two. So it's my recommendation to recommend Andrew to the Public Works Foreman with those parameters effective on Dave's retirement later this year.
Good. Thank you. Does anyone have any questions, or Bill?
This was also voted unanimously at a previous Personnel meeting, and I think the Personnel Committee would just like to say it's great to see you guys, I'd like to say with that.
Absolutely.
I guess, I think it also shows really good planning. I have, I mean, everybody's going to be set in their positions, and everything will just run normal, it's a really nice way to do it.
Appreciate that.
Any other questions or comments?
personnel committee would just like to say it's great to see guys have to answer with that.
Absolutely.
I guess, I think it also shows really good planning, I have, I mean, everybody's going to be set in their positions and everything will just run normally, it's a really nice way to do it.
Appreciate that.
Any other questions or comments? Great choice, okay. All in favor of approval of resolution number 11, please signify by saying aye as your name is called.
Alderman Lars.
Aye.
Tully.
Aye.
Peter.
Aye.
Fire.
Aye.
Niles.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Brandle.
Aye.
Lars.
Aye.
Tully.
Aye.
Peter.
Aye.
Fire.
Aye.
Niles.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Unanimous, thank you, great work, staff, Bill, Tim, everyone in staff, that's, we're very grateful that we're able to bring this in within budget and as Bill said, a complete project and I think it's going to be a great asset to Jefferson. So with that, all entertain a motion to adjourn. Double.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Lars, seconded by Alderman Tully, and voiced for all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you. Good evening. Chief.